It is now 7:30, so I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please take the roll. Here.
Jesse Rubin.
Here.
Jesse Moser.
Jesse Rubin.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Will now stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
I will now call for public comments. And I will note that it doesn't look like our owl is working, really. So we're just getting our owl back working. So those who watch our show in the syndicated version, I'm still not seeing it. Can see all of us. While we're doing that, are there any public comments? Seeing none. Supervisors report. I participated in the second meeting of the Intergovernmental Committee for Global Maps. We focus on sustainability issues and discuss whether or not there is an interest in a shared sustainability coordinator between the various municipal entities. I don't know where the townships will end up in this, but just giving you the report on that's where what they're looking at. It would be essentially that each of those governments could not provide enough work for a full-time person, and hopefully together we can. So I did contact the other townships. That would be a new concept for a township to be involved in. But given the broad statutory authority on environmental concerns, I feel like we could probably participate if that's what the board wanted to do. So as that continues, I will give you a report. That person would also be in charge of kind of maintaining a list of go to vendors and you know, being a repository of resources for all of the different governments. I also participated in the toy program. They do a great, they've been doing once a month, a question and answer period. It's been really, really helpful to get those questions answered, and you can definitely participate as well. Other than that, those are the main parts of the supervisor's report. Madam Clerk. Well, we will look for a motion to put the agenda. Is there a second? All right, so we have that in your packet. Is there any discussion? Do you have any recommendations? Absolutely. Obviously, that's, you know, not strictly required. It is nice, and it does, it does add a little bit of ceremony to the process.
Possibly, um, you know, we hear a lot about what we do and how it's relevant because the North Shore doesn't have any poverty. But in fact, the North Shore does have poverty because they're that allowed. So those were the people we were throwing around ideas for.
And a good person who learned things that may have some potential.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll reach out to him again, and he was helping me on a couple of things at the award. So traditionally, all the committee members that are retiring have an award. And then we also do the Georgia Awards Award. So we did have a nomination period. Those nominations go to the supervisor. I think we've just
Our awardee will be John Thomas.
So the Harry Ton isn't something you do every year. This year, no one has identified a person for the Harry Ton. And then the other award that we give is towards an organization. And the staff is discussing who they think is most appropriate. That is which organization has served the community or served the township the best this year. So, yes. Okay.
Of which third?
I realize I didn't have a description before. What I have was my presentation of the first.
Yeah, no, that would be super helpful. Thank you. Okay, great. Yeah, we just finalized. Also, we have the motion on the floor. So everyone has eyes or
I'll go after that. We're close to the floor discussion. Okay, all right. So call question, all those in favor, say aye. Or opposed. We have approved the annual town hall meeting agenda. And remember that that is an agenda for the electors of New York Township. We are there as electors, but it's not our meeting. The moderator runs that. Everyone there? Turning to approval of minutes, should we start with the, the earliest I'm seeing is January January 11th? Is there any discussions? Are you proposing an amendment? What would Page four. And so, Jesse Rubin. I made the motion on Friday. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as amended.
I had your When I'm typing up, I do.
I like that. All right, sorry. Motion on the floor to approve the minutes from January 11th as amended. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're now in line for February 8th. Are there any, is there any discussion of the February 8th board minutes? Yes.
If it was even not The board of review is finished with the bill and the township.
Good point.
That's the one you said.
Any other discussion? On February 8th? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of February 8th, we say aye. Any opposed? They are approved. February 22nd. Any discussion? And I do apologize, it looks like our video is not working today. But we should be assuming, Mr. Howard, you can tell me that you are hearing us. I would appreciate that at some point.
I can hear you.
Great, all right, thank you very much. We will need you soon. But yes, just assume we all agree.
I will.
Thank you. Seeing no, no discussion on our call, call the question, all those in favor of approving the February 22nd minutes, we say aye. Any opposed? They are approved. Thank you, and I think that brings us up to date, right? Absolutely. People are very happy about that. She's award-winning. Madam Assessor. Assessor's report.
And I checked with our liaison about the typical postcard or notice of exemptions already on file and the post to go out later this week. We're already getting calls, of course. Or sure file yet. We just keep, we'll keep telling them, you know, wait another week and see if you get a card or a notice. And if you don't, call us and we'll take care of that. At least the 22nd one are now fully available.
Thank you. Any questions for Jan? All right, new committee members. You could have received two applications in your packet. Welcome to Bell Lerner for Agency Oversight Advisory Committee and the other for Lynn King for Mental Health Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion about our two applicants? That, that is Brian's choice.
Lynn came to the Mental Health Committee meeting last night. And she was a wonderful person. I think that Brian and Lynn had spoken prior to the meeting. And based on her background and maybe he said he felt that that would be a good spot for her. And so I think that she had made the checkmarks and then Brian had made the X next to where she was going to be actually.
Good question. Yeah, seeing that she had worked for the Mental Health Corps, setting it up in Florida. Seems like a very appropriate position. Any other discussion? Absolutely. I will say this is our second time that we do have someone who did not sign. You know, affirming that they are a resident of New York Township and consenting to actually be considered. I believe last time we simply said pending their affirmation that that is true, we would approve that. And I would suggest we do something similar to not hold up their participation. Being that, any additional discussion? All right, we will, we will, I will entertain a motion to approve the new committee members with the caveat that Ms. Lerner signed her affirmation. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, welcome to the committee. Committee liaison reports, staying on the committee topic. Trustee McNally.
Yeah, so as I briefly mentioned, we had a last night, March 7th. It was, you know, very good meeting where the bulk of what we were doing was going through the letters, the funding letters. All the committee members had, the president had reviewed them in advance. And we did have some notes. And then I followed up today with Brian by email to type up the notes that we had all kind of given just for that. He wasn't trying to furiously write everything down. And then we got some good lead from reports from committee members who've gone to some of the agencies to check in. But it's, we're going to be losing a few fantastic folks on that committee. But as noted, we're already in the works for trying to beat that one up. So I did bring our thanks to the committee for the work that they had done. And, yeah.
Okay, now it's unplugged and accident. Right? We're just switching around a couple plugs. No, we're good. Long as no one needs that phone. Did it just do an owl noise? All right. Yes, it's already shown. I think it's thinking. All right, hopefully. All right. Agency Oversight, Trustee Rubin.
They wondered why they put in all this work while going to follow their recommendation. One member said she felt that we didn't acknowledge and factor in the management of some of the issues. So there was just an overall disappointment that we did not follow their recommendation. I acknowledge their disappointment. Again, I did say that we did very much take their recommendations into consideration and we did appreciate their hard work. And we did take their recommendations seriously. You know, I said personally, I don't know that I would have been in favor of any cuts. And really, this was kind of a meeting, you know, in the middle. And so it wasn't that we just didn't think about what they said. I personally listened with my head and listened with my heart and really listened to what they said. And I sat in all of those meetings. They were contentious. This was a very, very difficult decision. But again, I just reiterated that personally, the reason that I voted, why I voted was because we've just gone through a difficult pandemic. These were agencies that had been we've been funding these agencies for years and years. We were in fact reducing the amount, just not as much because we didn't want to pull the work out from under them. And so that's kind of how it was left. But I just wanted to at least express their sentiment.
Thank you. And I had Brian express an invitation for them, for anyone who wanted to come speak with us directly. It's still made for money follows the person, Trustee Moser.
Okay, fair enough.
I did speak with Brian in our pure jury. We have new cases and we had some returns. And we had sent kids to both VO and the WO mat for me. And we had feedback from them as to how much depth he was on there, picking up a little bit of WO mat, not so much. And I said to Brian, I said, look, I want to go make site visits. Even though I'm not a member, but I want to make site visits. The trustee, make sure they understand, you know, this is a difficult situation. I asked to make site visits, and now is our chance to really follow up the letters that were sent with the actual trustee's site visits. You know, getting the tour of the facility, mentioning how precarious the situation is, giving them as much encouragement as we can. And I think that is sometimes even more than, you know, fighting about dollars. It's going there and saying firsthand what's going on, pressing the question, we're doing everything we can to guard. You know, how we meet this major and radical improvement. And we've done to think outside the box to fill their mission. I'm planning, I would encourage any trustees who want to maybe join Brian and I to make site visits to both of those.
Just to clarify that the, the letters have not gone out. But actually, last, last year we waited until I was supervisor. So we waited substantially longer.
So we may hold off until after the letters actually go out.
That makes sense. I mean, they shouldn't be, no one should be surprised at the levels. It's a public meeting. But yes, the official notification.
Almost every letter through the party got some change. Came up with the fact that we didn't follow the funding and I couldn't explain the whole situation. And I think that it's not known. It's interesting, Mike was responsible. Thanks for letting us know how to analyze what you guys were doing. Kind of after your verse. But we were on the front lines of that issue. Secondary, you do. But overall, I really love. And I said, not only excellent by Brian, because you always get the job, and the community.
Thank you all. And I know Ellie gave us a little update on pure jury. And I appreciate that. It's also in Brian's report, which brings us to acknowledgement of staff reports. We have reports from community services administrator, social services administrator, and our communities communications and support services associates in your packet. Is there anything anyone would like to discuss?
I got a brain cut here, but in looking at the report. I was wondering if you have ever done or thought about doing gas cards with the increase in gas prices Russian invasion. I'm a little bit worried about the ability of some people who are already right on the line to pay for gas, which is very necessary even to get to us for food. And so I'm wondering if that might be something that we could think about doing. And then the other thing, you know, in the pure jury arena that I was thinking about is with spring and summer all the way. I was like reading over these things on Saturday when it was so pretty out. But with spring and summer on the way, I was wondering if it might be worth reaching out to our police liaisons in the township police forces to remind them of this option as kind of truancy, literary, loitering kind of stuff is coming up. That, that, you know, we're just kind of hoping to remind them that we're here. But it just seems like that might be a good option.
Great suggestions. I will definitely take a look at doing the gas cards. I feel like, I mean, this is an, I mean, this is double the price it was.
So either, I don't even know how it would work. But you know, if, and I'm thinking about the closest gas station we have around. If we do kind of, you know, gas cards to be for, you know, $15 for the gas, and something like that. Just as a way to help people, you know, kind of get, or, you know, essentially make it less burdensome to even get to us to get food. For the food pantry. That's just, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, like the gas, almost like gift cards that could only be used something like that, rather than, you know, just handing them a 20 and saying, get gas. You know, if you know, like a way to do it so that it's specific to the situation that people are dealing with having to do. Yeah, I was only using DPS. I think that that is the geographically closest gas station to the food pantry. So I was just thinking of that as the greatest one. But, you know, I have no Sure. Well, that's the thing is there's the lake in Green Bay, and I was even thinking of a tower in Green Bay. So you're right. Two different kind of arenas there.
And I will say that we do make those decisions as far as which private institution we support with our food pantry every day, essentially. What we did, for instance, with the, you know, we do our winter holiday grocery carts to senior citizens. And we had traditionally used Rand Foods. This year, we did ask both Rand and Jewel to essentially make an offer. This year we did ask both Rand and Jewel to essentially make an offer. Rand had usually given us a discount and this year they did not. Jewel did and was more used by our senior citizens. We went with Jewel. So what, we can certainly, you know, shop around for the best thing for our buck as well in this case. And I think that's also something that Brian had brought up was that Rand is still supportive of the food pantry, but they're, you know, as they shut, they're new, they're not giving us the discounts we were seeing. Um, they're a great partner to us in the community. Right? Cool. Take a look at that. That's a good idea. Um, I was just listening to the radio about, oh, yeah, good point. Um, okay, so gas cards, we'll discuss that at tomorrow's staff meeting, which, um, I will warn anyone who's intending to come will likely be starting at ten thirty due to a passport. Good point. Thank you. That's a good concern as well. Anything else on the, um, the staff reports for discussion? I'm sure you have all liked our Instagram. I hear that's mostly Kate. Good job. I do this, I, I like the Facebook stuff. Um, and I'm very excited for the fall wellness program and thanks, and thank you Julie for a really tireless effort on that. It's a dream that's coming to reality. Um, and our, and our summer interns will be, will be great as well. And hopefully we'll invite them to a meeting so we can see all the fun that is Russian government. Okay, we are now in line for new business. Under the reorganization, you should have a list of proposed neutral positions going forward. This document I created, um, it is not, you know, set in stone, um, but essentially meant to be a jumping off point for this discussion. Um, I would like to seek approval to enter into third party contracts for HR and accounting though, and to start this reorganization to better streamline our, our services. Is there any discussion? Yes. And you should have a second document, Government Accounting, Inc. That we have an auditing firm. This would be an internal system. Yes, this is our. No, right. Mm-hmm. And we do have a representative on the line from Government Accounting, James Howard. And he is here to answer any questions that you might have. Um, and I did receive a proposal from them. Um, and initially I had thought about just using a third party source for the human resources. As I was researching various township setups, um, it came to my attention that Hanover, Oak Park, and Schaumburg, who I really look at as, you know, great townships with very, um, complex setups. Um, much more complex than ours, have all been using this particular accounting company, Government Accounting, Inc. Um, so originally I came from Hanover and I noticed that two of my other, you know, township role models have also, um, so I did speak with them.
Both of those towns should, in terms of satisfaction with Government Accounting.
Very much so.
Um, would this be in the room of, uh, we have a idea handling our coffee?
Right, this would be a proposal to have third party accounting. Um, they would be in-house one day a week. We'd be able to have checks every week. Um, you can see in the, in the proposal, all the services that they provide on page in schedule A.
Would it be a one-year contract? I'm sorry.
Good questions.
Um, and then perhaps this is a question, but you know, how, what are the, you know, contractual contracts in terms of, um, the length? Do we have to, I mean, um.
Oh, guys, let me figure out how to, the apple might be working now. All right, Mr. Howard.
Now I can see everybody.
Now you can see us. Mr. Howard, the, um, the question was whether or not these are, this is a one-year term for the, for your general contract, um, or what the, what your general practice is.
Sure. So typically we, when we propose services, it's for twelve months with no increase upon the next twenty-four months. So what we like to do is have a, you know, have an agreement in place that if you were to say this isn't the right fit, uh, you could walk away with a thirty-day written notice to us. Uh, we kind of pride ourselves on our client relationship, so there's no hard contract, so to speak, in terms of a number of years. Um, but we, we promise not to have an increase in three. Uh, and then again, just would need a written notice on thirty days, uh, in, in order to, uh, if we, if we, if we weren't the right foot, uh, to walk away.
Um, and the proposal that I've received from them would be for two thousand six hundred a month. Um, you have the original, this was, this came after the packets. I should have printed it for you. I can print them now if you like. Actually, I have no idea. I'd do that from here. Um.
So that would be locked into three years?
What it looks like.
Correct.
And that would include all these submissions that are required by the accounting for annual reports and annual accounting as well as the monthly accounting?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear it, hear the question.
When I keep a corporate, it's probably from Minister of Accounting, I think, you know, a monthly, because I think that could be separate fees for the annual reports that are required. The, I mean, this twenty-six hundred a month would include twelve months for the work, including all the annual requirements.
That's correct. It's all inclusive.
Yep. Is that what you're looking for? Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't, we have a, a, one, a monthly retainer to help with budgeting. We don't charge, um, outside of that. Typically, all the services are contained within that proposal and so that you wouldn't see an extra bill from us for anything.
I see you guys have a lot of fire protection experience, but you've got a couple of big ventures, Scott. How long have you been doing Schaumburg Township?
Hanover?
How long have you been doing Hanover for?
Ooh, Hanover, I, that, that's been one of our longest clients. I want to say we've been there at least, uh, twelve years in the capacity that we are now, um, could be more.
How about Schaumburg?
Schaumburg's newer, so we've been there, uh, approximately three years now.
In Oak Park?
Oak Park is a little bit older than that. I think they're also roughly four, for three to four years, yep.
Now, I'm guessing, I don't know if you can disclose this to us, but I'm guessing that all, the budgets for all three of those townships are, are larger than the Harps probably.
Yeah, exactly. Based on the scope, they're, they're much bigger, um, in terms of just size.
Would, would there be a go-to person hypothetically, if you were to take on this township, would there be one person in your organization who would be primarily in charge of it? So we would have access to a, a person who always is familiar as opposed to maybe it being done by somebody else each month?
Yep, that would be, that would be me. So you'd have access to me, um, you know, whenever needed. I'd, I'd try to respond as quickly as I can in terms of emails and, and, uh, phone calls. Uh, but we, we would also staff somebody there, um, with a, you know, kind of a lesser skill set, so to speak, to go through the transactional work, uh, on a, on a weekly basis. Um, so they would have a decent knowledge of what are the goings on, but I would be the, I would be the contact for any sort of high-level question, um, or, or something that was really, um, you know, more, that would need a more experienced person to answer. Um, so that would be.
How about attendance at our, um, at our monthly meetings and special meetings?
Yeah, we could do that either. Typically, we do it, uh, by request or if, if you would like, we could do it, um, quarterly. I would, it would definitely be up to the board. If you want me there, uh, monthly, um, I would just hope that we could do some of it via Zoom maybe. Um, is it's just a little bit easier as I've got, I've got an earlier meeting, uh, today that, uh, it just helps if I can, yeah, I don't have to drive because it would just be too, too much of a drive for me to get there.
One last question, is that included in the twenty-six hundred a month or would there be additional charge to you?
No, no extra charge. It's included.
Thank you, Brian.
Are there any additional questions?
With respect to the, um, are we considering the accounting and the HR separately? I didn't see anything about the HR.
Yes, so HR, they work with an organ, with Howard Simon. That is a separate agreement that we would be considering. Um, I, you know, no offense, um, I'm not yet sold on that. Uh, but would be, I'm still considering that. There are so many online options, Gusto, Kalosity, you know, ADP. Um, but they, but, um, apparently Howard Simon does have an app as well. So a lot of the concerns about being able to get, um, pay stubs right away, check your PTO level, things like that would be, all of those programs would work for that. Um, what is nice about the Howard Simon option is that they work well together. So. I'm asking you to, to approve the entering of the contract discussions. I'll bring a contract, um, for the reorganization. I'm asking for the reorganization to be approved.
They don't understand, but it's current.
That's what this document is?
Well, but I don't think that. That is a nice statement.
Right, it is, this is about how we are, want to operate going forward.
Well, I do want.
So. The, the question I think that you're asking is if we as a board are okay with discussing the contract, not signing a contract.
Right.
But discussing, you know, entering into contract negotiations with governmental accounting.
Right, and a third-party HR.
And a third-party HR. Would we have the ability at a later meeting to further discuss the contract before you signed it?
Yes, I believe that makes sense.
Okay.
I don't see a reason why.
That might give, possibly that might give you some.
Okay. Are you moving to enter into executive session?
I don't necessarily have to. But I was thinking that that wasn't part of my agenda, but would I, surely before we.
This is separate from the personnel issues, with personnel issues need to be discussed in a closed session. Budget issues have to be discussed in an open session. That is why this is an open session. That makes sense. All right, so what I would ask is that we table reorganization until after discussion of the BMO Harris Authorization Resolution in the same meeting. Um, we do have a guest for the Oakton Scholarship and then we go back and do, um, closed session at the end. So that we can, yeah. Okay. So is there, um, is there such a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Reorganization is tables until later in the agenda. Oakton Scholarship? Okay, so I know that I've had, there might be some, some typos in here. So basically, um, we, we started discussing a possibility of an Oakton Scholarship about two years ago. Um, so I know, I apologize, um, to those who were not on the board yet. Um, essentially there were concerns over, um, at, at that time, it was modeled after Niles, Niles Township Scholarship. They have two scholarships that I'm correct. Um, one for people returning to school and one for traditional students. Um, and there was concern over, um, intergovernmental transfers that I believe Tussie Moser brought up. Um, well, I was impressed with how Northfield Township, um, had put their resolution, which really clarified to me that it's not about an intergovernmental, um, um, exchange essentially. It's a, it's a fund, it's a nonprofit, which is certainly within our purview to fund. Um, and essentially borrowed their resolution. Um, their contract was a bit more complex than it needed to be. Um, so I do have, I did ask our representative from Oakton Community College to come and answer any questions that you might have. But we would not be using as complex of a contract. They have a, they have a form gift contract for scholarship setup. Um, so with that said, are there any general questions? That, exactly, that's what I'm saying, that I had a couple typos, so that I, I cut the exhibit because their, their, um, contract wasn't, wasn't working after we discussed. So you can go ahead and strike which is attached as resolution exhibit one. Yeah, it was very lawyered. Yes, exactly. And as you can see, section two asks us to put in the parameters as a board, um, the concept being, um. So for instance, there are different ways you can set this up. Um, and I'll certainly let experts be experts. Um, but, you know, one option is to have an endowment and essentially have a neutral township scholarship going forward. And we wouldn't have to ever fund again, um, essentially a special project. Um, and, and that's, that helps students, you know, perpetuity. The other option Northfield is currently doing is they put a hundred thousand dollars in and they're going to spend it all. Is that correct? Right, and they're going to do it every year theoretically, pending approval. How does Niles do theirs? Got it.
I, yeah, I'm happy to do that. Um, I'm happy, so I, I work for the college president.
For new true township students to go to Oakton. Because this is our public community college. Like when you vote, you vote for Oakton, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there were a lot of interest a couple of years ago. Essentially, funding someone to go to Oakton could be cutting down their, their expenses to go anywhere, essentially.
So, you know, of course, I'm a key advocate for community college. Your plan is to run a transfer path and get a bachelor's or beyond, you know, maybe you're going to be an AP or a PhD of some sort. That's a long educational journey. So to Oakton, because we are probably taxed, is $136.25 of federal income. So a full-time student is taking 30 credit hours a year, is paying about $3,700 alone in private college. And it depends on the program. If you're in Mercy, those are very expensive ones. And they're lab-based, but as on average, you're going to get about $5,000 a year. While we spend a little, so community colleges have offered online for almost 15 years. And that was really helpful to us because we made the transition during pandemic. It was difficult, but I think fairly seamless. But what we found from that is that there are a lot of groups that really do like to learn online. And so we're offering a lot of options for students right now. We are back in classrooms, and there are some students who stopped their education until they could get back in person. They just understand that they learn better that way. But we offer both synchronous and asynchronous classes online. Classes where you can attend that you have a simple time, the professor is there, you're seeing them just like the residents can watch your reading and interact with the class in that way. And then there's also classes where it's all pre-recorded and you learn on your own time. Really valuable for returning students. You have lots of life commitment. And so we will continue to offer programming in all of those ways and watch our enrollment trend throughout where we need to add something to them.
Right.
We have a lot of reverse, colors reverse transfer students. And there are a lot that they're at a home, following spring. But what a great way to, when you're home, get one of those very difficult classes off the plate without the distraction of the other side. For summer students, often are a lot like you.
Absolutely true, it was a great experience.
Affordability for higher ed really exploding. Yeah, skyrocket exploding. You know, and the impact of getting an education on future earnings. It's really a way to get out of poverty, or not even poverty, but from a middle class to upper middle class. It's about, you know, mobility.
So what, I'm sorry, I just, have we decided on a level prior to, you know, on the board? Or is this a?
I'd love mine.
Okay.
So that we can have this discussion.
Okay.
So if the, like I said, the first step is, you know, do we want something current use, which doesn't then marry us to future allocations? Or an endowment, which is a larger investment now, but hopefully that will pay off in the future. So for instance, a $100,000 endowment gives us $5,000 in annual award versus $50,000 gives us $2,500 in annual rewards.
Remind me, did we put anything in our budget for next year pertaining to this?
We are work, this is part of why I brought it up now, is to get it into that budget. It would be, right now, it's not special, it would be in that special use project of strategic significance. But yes, that's why, if we're going to do a large endowment, let's get it in there. I think that, yeah. That sounds really smart. Exactly, so why don't you go ahead and, I'm just going through your documents.
So, so how college puts their, that you don't, is based on criteria. So A, the students have to be able to, and B, they work higher. Now guys, you can add ratios. So often townships will want to award students who live in their geographic area. So that might be. Also further restrict the GPA. If you feel like you want to support a higher academic achiever, you could make a point. If the high school scholarship that my township has does have a GPA, they started at 3.5 and then realized, you know, that's pretty, pretty serious. They bumped back down to like 2.75 for their high school scholarship. Their returning adult scholarship, they left it at a 2.0. For folks that might be returning to school either with high school, no college, or some college that years ago, it's very intimidating to come back to college. And so they wanted to make sure that even the obvious, have the opportunity to remove a financial barrier. So that might be an area that you consider. So anything, merit thing, either of both, either of both. You can add the experience of the financial, that they have our financial department.
We don't have to, we don't have to set it, yeah. They wouldn't set this. I'm sorry?
Some of them are, some of them are. We, we manage the portfolio of about 30 of the individualized scholarships right now. And last year, we had over 700 out of the people from our student body. We were able to support about half of them who did scholarship work. Applying for the scholarship through the town? Yes, but as donors, you would name the scholarships, you determine how you wanted it to be named, and you determine award criteria. And I'm happy to work with you for that. We want to make it, obviously honor your interests and values, but not so restrictive that we have trouble actually overwhelming students to apply. So there's, there's a balance from that point. And all over towards financial aid office. We have an application which is currently, we have, like for scholarship. This year, we already have over 900 people who've applied, and our application is so open. We all, early consideration will be valid upon offer. Students from the township attend? I actually. So right now, I, this academic year, our total, like, of unsecured students is 10,000 by 30. And that's for all three semesters, including summer. But some just come this summer, summer, or fall and, and spring, or some combination.
But that's all four places. So 2,200, 2,700? What's a two-year?
Yeah, we're a two-year institution, but only, only about 30 by 30 for the 10,000. And these students that, as I said, the graduation tour, which is one of my favorite moments of the year. Do you have graduates across our stage that have been at this for a decade? Or sometimes in their 60s or 70s or 80s, and just determine that they're going to do this because they want to accomplish that goal? And then be a model for the family. So what would be the number, 10,500? So 10,500. Similar, it depends on what you, all of the, the 25. About the entire zip code, which I know your township only has part of, there are 1,134 students. That zip code entirely, there are 500.
The number I have from 2019 to 2020, which I have heard, and second, if I'm wrong, that that community college enrollment went down during COVID, is that correct? So from 2019 to 2020, we are at 758.
Wow.
Yeah. Yes.
So if those students that are with us are so persistent and so determined and so committed to the work of their unit, and I hope that this kind of career area of students that aren't, because we've done it in depth, physically, we've done to have economic mobility and social mobility. So. So a quick question, we're already in the residency requirement. If we were to put in something about, that this would have to go through a new true township resident. To the extent that we're talking about a returning student or a student coming, their traditional student coming straight out of high school, who's still going to live in a new true township, that's, that's one thing. If we're thinking about somebody like Cassie Robin's daughter, who theoretically would be, you know, it could, could apply, I said, number one, I don't know if that's possible, if it's somebody who's coming for a summer term, could apply for a scholarship. But is there a way to wordsmith language such that somebody in that instance, who is living most of the year out of state, out of the township, but, you know, would be, still be eligible for that? Does that make sense?
Understood, perfect, thank you.
Yes, so there's a lot to unpack, make sure I get to all of it. So if, if you provide us whatever that they told me, provided to the financial aid office to be a criteria, then they look at all of the applications that meet your criteria, and based on whatever that student's, that was worth more than their registered worth, or if financially meets the criteria, yet they might have, they help qualify for that that needs, but they, maybe by to be large or small. They award whatever the student needs in order to make their tuition books and be, depending on what you, you award. If for some reason the student does not enroll to meet their entire financial award, they don't take that money home. It goes back into your finance department. So they, some students might get $250, some students might have a much larger, or an aggregate worth last year was about $700. And that would be about half of the student for, for a full-time student per year. So it would definitely help a percent.
And Cassie, in the materials that I've read, that they need to have a minimum of six hours registered, so that when the person taking chemistry, which is probably three hours, probably wouldn't count, right? Okay.
When I think about this, it's a great opportunity for us, but I, I think to be consistent with the mission of the township, what I was thinking about, it needs to be somebody who signs the document. And I really think it needs to be somebody with financial.
Yes.
With the mission. And I like the idea of, you know, encouraging, enticing, motivating. So I like the idea of a minimum GPA. I think 3.5 is really restrictive and difficult, but I don't think 3.0 is unused, unless it's the average. And I like the idea of us being a commitment to this program for a couple of years to see how it goes, and then maybe based on how things run, maybe off a bigger commitment after off the one or two year program. But those are the things that I'm thinking are core requirements, that you guys may have more. Would you want to go lower than the 2.75, Niles minus 2? It's like a B minus. It's like a B minus. That hard work. I would be somewhere. Five and three. But I could go.
Well, let's, let's ask Ms. Sawyer, you know, you're here. At that two point seven five, has the Nile Scholarship, you know, are there lives there? Are there, are there students from that level?
There are.
Okay.
And I will tell you that whenever you set up. If you're struggling. All of your finances. And then you can modify whether you want to modify that criteria or not. You might say, no, you know, we're, we're going to stay, of course, like, we will learn somebody next year listening to the clothes. But we always have a conversation with them. The other thing I just mentioned, Professor, is. So once, once you set the criteria, you take care of the, where the donor gets to get involved in them is in a spiritual process. Here in November, after the semester started, we have a donor appreciation grant. And we invite all of our donors, which is great to be in a room with a lot of donated donors, and all of our students that come have fresh on Saturday morning. And it is, it is really very powerful. We often have to make. Governor and ask their one word about what these students first fellowship meant to them. And I have to tell you, it is. Yes. Their study. Hope and obviously. So they're very powerful.
So far, I'm hearing a resident of the township, financial need, and we don't want the GPA to be a deterrent from someone who might have struggled in school from bringing themselves, you know, from that kind of mobility, but also want to incentivize hard work. And at this time, I think it's, we need to start discussing numbers. What are we comfortable with? Because I'm hearing so far all positive discussions for a initial trial period and for doing a current use rather than an endowment. Okay.
And like you. That we brought up, and now to be the shorter term. I think that's a good idea to. And, you know, just to, you know, kind of throw out, you know, numbers for the sake of argument and discussion. You know, I would think about maybe twenty two year. Uh, you know, seven thousand five hundred a year, which could give the college the ability to maybe to, you know, half of, you know, just based on the numbers. You know, it sounds like that would maybe do for half scholarship, something around that line. And, you know, just to kind of make a difference in the lives of, you know, four of our residents here. So just, and it's, I'm not committed to numbers, I'm just throwing it out for the sake of discussion and argument.
Is there a motion on the floor for discussion?
Uh, yeah, I would make, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, so is there a second? The motion is for the seven thousand five hundred level. Any discussion?
I would say.
Yes.
When I think of the special projects that we've seen it over the years, just starting money and so on. I think we're a little bit better. I think we throw around twenty five thousand every now and then. Maybe twenty five and fifty. If we did twenty and twenty for four, for twenty a year, you know, that's meaningful because we're spending a little bit of time on this. Certainly, the college has been spending time on it. I don't think that, like, a forty thousand argument for a two-year program would be out of line with some of the seedings that we've done for special projects over the years. I'm just trying to think of.
Right.
Kind of think of similar examples, some precedents of. Remember texted tip, is in the neighborhood of about twenty five thousand. Or one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I'm not sure we can, you know, make a decision that we would definitely approve the budget for the following year. But we can make, I'm guessing that if this resolution passes, it's, I mean, it's our own selves. So I think we can be pretty sure that we would follow our own direction. Okay. Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah.
But I guess I would modify the. The motion to.
Is there a second for the amendment's motion? I'll put in favor of the amendment. So this would be for the fall, is that correct? Yeah. Right? Great.
On the Northfield Township, the one that just made. They made a wider commitment. And their criteria are that you live in a township, they have this. And financial is a part of that. Miles Township, their two scholarships in total, they give us about seventy thousand dollars a year. The one that has the endowment that is also exactly, that's the high school scholarship. About five thousand dollars for the. That they're aware of. Plus, the high school criteria has a higher pay. And it's a high school student that lives in their township, their financial. Returning adult has to. They live in the township and is about somebody.
Do we all want more fields?
Fifty hundred. Oh, I get it. I mean, it is significantly harder than ours. Um, they have more, they're bigger, yeah. They do have. They have a cemetery, they do have a cemetery, yeah. Um, hold on. There's a really weird provision of the township code that if a cemetery gets just left there, that the township has to take over it. And that's how most of these guys take it. Um. There you go. All right, let's see, where would she be? I'm gonna, I'm like experimenting with her own website. I'll tell her how it goes. Okay.
Everybody's down there.
Hmm?
I was just saying, everybody stare.
Yeah, everybody stare, twenty one budget. Okay. It could be, right?
It could be, it really is your preference. The person you recommended you start and not having. Um, you know, I think that we know that from the. That.
Especially here, trying something that's new. It might be nice to kind of give the rawest possible. To the financial department to, within the bounds of the given. To put the, put the dollars that they need. And then hopefully next year at this time, that, you know, we'll have some feedback such that, you know, we're able to, you know, tweak or, you know, adjust as necessary.
Okay. I'm hoping mine, I'm comfortable with twenty five. Too small to be innocuous, but I don't.
Their town fund is for that, four million rather than three million.
If they spend on this small number, they want to stretch to a hundred.
No. We, we don't, we don't, we're not. No, no, no. No matter what, this is a new program and someone's going to be very happy to receive scholarships.
Twenty thousand breaks the right balance of, you know, giving this, you know, the good old college try. But it's the same, I have you, I said you. But, but also being, you know, financial, you know, good financial support, you know, for our residents.
Julie, you can use college try in all future discussion of this or press releases. Okay.
That's occurred in the red. Total and then. So that will help the parents. Look free to call me any time. Or you might be. Help us happy to make those. If you haven't been to campus for a while. It's part four. In the last five years.
Yeah. So the current motion on the floor is twenty thousand for two years. Um.
Wait, I thought we were one year.
I'm sorry, for one year. Um, with the parameters of for scholarship recipients of a resident of the township with financial need. And are we at two point five at this point? And we're at currently at two point seven five GPA. Is there any additional discussion? Well, that's, that's, that's a handy, yeah. But I'll go ahead and put that in there for fun. Okden students. Or, yeah, yeah. No additional discussion? Um, we, because this involves money, we will call the roll, Madam Clerk. Yes.
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 Thank you all, and thank you, Ms. Sawyer, for coming. And thank you for, you know, keeping up with me for two years. I appreciate it. We're excited. Weird. I think we're on mask mandate. Okay, so, sorry, mask required requirements in town hall. As you all likely know, County has removed its mask mandate for indoor spaces. We do, as a township, have the ability to continue to require masks in the building. The staff would prefer that to be the case for the communal spaces as well as our volunteers, in particular, those who are most vulnerable. And then, of course, we do serve a substantial number of those who are older or have underlying conditions by design. So I would like to ask that this, or ask for a motion to continue a mask requirement in the town common, town hall common areas.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have anything to discuss yet. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? Okay, now.
So, um, we just also pretend to go meetings of the committee held in common areas, just not during long recess hours.
Yes, okay, that needs to be made. Okay, so shall we say? Oop, it's currently, I believe, Elliot, your motion, so common areas and public meetings? And public meetings? All those in favor of? Well, so it's, it's common areas, so people coming in for the pantry, for instance, people coming in, you know, to. Yeah, surgery. Yeah.
Board meetings. Yeah, for all contribute.
Yes. Right. Yep.
How that will impact, like, the annual meeting, even though it's being held off-site? Right?
Yes.
That's off-site.
So that, oh, good point, yeah. Right, so the way that the current motion on the floor is for town hall.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, yes, I, I think we've deferred to the well. Yeah. Right.
Right, so requiring backseat board and masking, they haven't replied that yet.
Yeah, obviously private.
Saturdays.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, for Saturday. For those going to the women's lunch, Women's History Month lunch. Um, okay, so we have to amend the motion to also include public meetings. So I believe those would be common areas, either way, all those in favor? All as opposed? Any other additional discussion? Yes.
There is a sign on our little fan downstairs in the staircase that says masks are required upstairs, which we are requiring for Landon and myself, with no date of sight for when you open the door. You know, that will remain in place unless and until I take it out. So we are, who knows, maybe there's another variant.
We don't.
They're waiting for us, I don't know. But when, when, when we open, we'll have every chair there filled at the beginning with.
Right.
Probably hanging around in conference room. All state.
Absolutely.
A lot of the. We are still masking.
All right, so this, the motion as amended would be to require masks in common areas and public meetings. Out of us. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion pass. Okay. We are on the BMO Harris resolution. I'm still not seeing paragraph one on page five.
That's because they did not update it. The question from where we found is a brief explanation. Is if you look at page two.
Okay.
That's the truth. There's a number one.
There isn't.
Yes, there is.
On page two? Of the second page? The second page.
Better, okay, well, better so.
Okay.
Second document. There's a number one under, after I, yes. So.
I.
It runs for four and a half pages, which will land you on now page five. And that's the two, three, four and five. That's the.
So they're saying the Roman. Are actually with.
Our substerminates, yeah.
That's bad lawyering.
Okay. Okay.
Does that satisfy?
Yeah, yeah.
So then I think that means we are awaiting their answer, is that correct? Yes. Um, I believe that that means that we are in line for motion table. All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Where did I do? Okay, we'll go ahead and do approval of the claims before we, before we go back to reorganization. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the payroll? None? All the questions for the, the, the role? Yes.
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 This is our third and final. Um, any discussion? Day none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and this closes out the, so this clear, is that correct? Does not. Okay. All right. I will now enter Tina's motion to go into closed session pursuant to five I L T S 120 slash two C one. To discuss personnel, sorry. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. No, no, discussion, oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead. Discussion to go into closed session.
I just wanted to, Diane, I, I just, I'm a little surprised by the speed with your movement regarding the reorganization. I was hoping to hear a little bit of Diane before we discuss what might be the future of her.
That is, like, what do you, what would you like? Because there's nothing on the agenda.
Well, but regarding the reorganization, we have heard from a third party. What I'm wondering is what our present supervisors thoughts would be about.
Administrator.
Administrator, our administrator and financial, you know, financial leader, what her thoughts would be about a part-time position? Just focusing on the finances of the township and not the supervision. Yeah, how, what are your thoughts in that?
I think if this juncture expressed the way, so this takes place and, Gail, we have talked about action. And I think if that's.
Okay. Sounds good, and that would be before we, we would hear from you before we make a final decision. You have that opportunity?
Well, that, so, once we're done with closed session, we are, we are back in line for the reorganization discussion. That'll be an open session again. I, I don't know. But.
No, I mean, that's all right, I'll just wait until.
Okay.
What I'm trying to figure out, are we making final decisions tonight?
That is up to you.
That's not on the agenda.
Yeah, no, the agenda is the reorganization.
Okay, but we're making a final decision about how we're going to reorganize.
We don't have to, but that is on the agenda, that's so it can be decided.
You don't want to make that final decision. If I knew we were going to make a final decision on reorganization tonight, I want to hear more from Diane and from Brian for that better too. Because of the way that the reorganization looks like it might kind of be his responsibility.
And the manner in which this is written, it must kind of feel like it's taken piece, you know? So there are some things that could be set up.
But I don't want to let Diane linger around if I don't.
No, no, no.
If I'm making a final decision tonight.
Well, I would move for a final decision.
On, on, on the.
We don't have, if that is completely up to the board on, as to whether or not you pass the reorganization. But that, right now, we're in line for the closed session unless we want to get out of, we want, we, we, yes, we're currently, we haven't done the vote on the closed sessions. But we don't have to go into the closed session, we can stay out and do work and do. Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to be a flamer, I mean, I don't want to mess up anything. I just want to make sure that I'm, you know, that I'm not asking to vote on some final reorganization plan without necessarily, Diane and Brian.
Okay, so Gail's just said she's not going to make us do it.
I can't. So. There's something on the agenda and therefore we would be, you know, we would be Robert's rule in order, in order to take final actions. So if that's your question, that's the answer. Yeah. Is that, is there a mo, well, okay, so we currently have a motion on the floor. Do you want to rescind, who has the motion, Madam Clerk, who had the motion to go into closed session? Do you withdraw your?
So withdraw the motion.
Okay, so is there a motion to table the reorganization? All the seconds, all those in favor of tabling the reorganization, say aye. Okay, so. So that table, that motion carries, the reorganization is tabled to the next meeting. Is there a now a motion to go into closed session? All those in favor, oh, sorry, and we have to do the statute again. Oh, can we, can we use the same statute I cited? Okay. And, well, we have, we have a motion on the floor, but let's take a break. That work for you? Yeah, so all those in favor of going to closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now turning off the Zoom. We will be taking a verbatim record of the closed session. No, I even forgot my phone.